Okay. Good evening. The planning board meeting, one Tuesday, September 5th, will come to order. I believe one item on the agenda will not be heard tonight, which is the Zero Great Pond Road and 1193 Great Pride Road in North Andover Solar. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's the only one. Everything else will be...
Yes, that will be considered as of October 19.
Okay. So why don't we then go to the first public hearing, 1975 Salem Street? I think we pretty much finished that one, didn't we?
Yes. So this is for the land disturbance permit at 1975 Salem Street. It was to take one lot and create the three lots. There will be three single-family houses on these lots. There'll be a common driveway. Stormwater has officially been closed out. There are no concerns, and all other outstanding issues have been addressed. So there is a decision drafted in your packet if you'd like to make a decision on this tonight.
Okay.
Well, last meeting, there was, I guess, a question about whether the Board of Health had reviewed everything?
So they have reviewed the subject designs for lots two and three, and they are... I think they approved those designs, but they have not approved the one on lot one.
It has not been submitted.
Oh, it has not been submitted.
Right, and there's no requirement that they approve it prior to this decision.
Oh, okay. So we have that as part of our...
We do have perk tests on the lot. We just haven't submitted the subject design.
We have a... As part of the decision, one of the conditions is that they must meet all of the approvals of the Health Department for the subject systems for all three individual lots. But I do know that lots two and three have been reviewed by the Health Department. It's just lot one that has not.
Any other questions before we close? Would somebody like to close the public hearing for 1975 Salem Street?
I make a motion to close the public hearing for the 1975 Salem Street.
For the... Yes, for the land disturbance permit, right? Yeah. Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Let's dig into the decision.
Rebecca, on the special conditions, the permit definitions, paragraph B, it looks like the dates might be wrong. It says that the... It refers to the plans prepared dated October 3, 2017. Should that be 2016? Or... It's just dated after this, so I'm just not sure what that date's supposed to be.
Revised to August 20, 2017?
Yeah. Was it originally dated in October of this year, or...
It was...
It was October last year.
Yeah, '16. So you're right. Sorry.
Good catch.
So I'll update that, and the last plan site is... What off?
It's a no-take. Do you have in finding of fact five, there's a reference to a no-take?
Yes.
It's probably a technical term, but...
For endangered species.
Yeah.
What's that?
Endangered species program. If they allow you to do it, they classify it as a no-take. If... They're not going to allow you to do it, they say it's a taking of the habitat, and you can't do it.
Okay. That's what I... I figured it was something like that. I just hadn't heard that.
It's an odd terminology, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any... Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the land disturbance permit as amended for 1975 Salem Street?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. 500 Great Pond Road, North Andover Country Club.
So this was for watershed special permit, and it was for an application to construct a patio and fire pit area within associated non-discharge and non-disturbance zone. And the applicant has finished their stormwater review, and the consultant has stated that they have no further concerns, and there are no other outstanding items, and a decision has been drafted for your review.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm a member of the North Andover Country Club, so I'll recuse myself from this.
Okay. Good. We'll let the record show that.
Yes.
So not directly related to this, but the general manager has agreed to take a look at the waterfront and what they can do to help clean that up, and I'll do that with them.
Good. Excellent.
So it's glad to see that.
Excellent. Yeah.
How much... What's the gas source again? Just can you go to the...
It's natural gas.
So not any... You're not storing anything on it?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on 500 Great Pond Road for the watershed special permit.
Okay. Somebody like to second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. By the way, Chris, you voted, so I'll have to tell her. No, because she's recusing herself.
No, honestly, I was under the impression that I would only be allowed to vote on special permit.
This is a special permit.
Oh, that's why I asked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Let's look at this. Okay. All good. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a... Go for it.
Make a motion to approve the... Watershed special permit for 500 Great Pond Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that... Rebecca, on the first page, it does say four, vote of 4-0, so it would probably be 5-0.
Yep, and then I'll add Chris.
Yeah, I just suggest, yeah, naming who it was.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving right along. Grace Point Community Church.
So this is an application for special permit, specifically site plan review and parking reduction. The applicant proposes to convert the interior of the existing gymnasium into a conventional church facility for worship, assembly, and office use. There are no outstanding issues pertaining to this particular project, and we have drafted a decision for your review.
Okay. Any questions from the board before we close?
I don't have any questions. It's just a comment that I was very appreciative of the applicant coming in and working with the town, rather than going through what is and what is not covered by the Dover Amendment. It's good, especially with a, you know, a church that's going to be part of the community to have that worked in, so that is appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Glad to do so.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'd make a motion to close the public hearing as to site plan review and reduction of parking special permit, 505 Sutton Street, Grace Point Community Church.
Okay. Second?
For 25 Orchard Hill Road.
Oh.
Yeah.
25 Orchard Hill Road. Thank you.
Motion made, and Pete, you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review and the parking exception. Is that correct terminology?
Reduction.
Reduction. For 25 Orchard Hill Road, Grace Point Community Church.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So thank you very much. Wow, we zipped through the public hearings. Very well done. So did you want to talk about the stockpiling or wait till they showed up?
They are here.
They are here. Okay. Okay. Yes. Okay. Well, let's talk about it.
So as we're well aware of, the site visit for the solar project, when the board arrived, we had found that the site had been partially constructed and disturbed. There was the gravel access road was done, and then we saw that they had pushed around some soil, and that there was actually some stockpiling going on at the site. They had done erosion control around the perimeter of what they were working on. However, what we thought was the start of the solar project that we were actually there for was work that they were doing for something that we previously permitted back in March of 2017 for the construction of the art center. So what had happened over the course of some of the abatement periods and going through the demolition of the barn and the removal of the soils, they had found some things here and there that delayed their construction time. And as the students were coming back for the school semester to begin, there was some general concern about the foot traffic between the students and the construction traffic of the trucks going up to the original area of where we were going to stockpile the fill up on the soccer field. And so I'm pulling up the plan right now of the approved stockpile location for the art center, and this is the JV soccer field. And what was supposed to happen was that the fill would be brought up to this location and then graded in order to make the area more level and easier to play on, so to speak. So they had, because of that, decided that the traffic going up towards that area was more detrimental to the student's safety, rather than taking the additional stock fill and bringing it over to the other site and stockpiling that fill there. They would bring that fill back to the site once it had been completed as planned to then fill in and backfill the area and do what they had originally wanted to do with the stockpile. So we're kind of left at a couple of different options. Specifically, the construction of the art center itself was in the general zone of the watershed. There was some landscaping that was in the actual non-discharge zone. However, the soccer field was the most sensitive area of the project, as they were going to do the grading and the stockpiling, and that was in the non-disturbance zone, which would be the closest to the lake. So...
Saying this is better.
So I'm not saying this is better. What I'm saying is that we want to take... Our major concern, I think, of everybody's is the student's safety. Nobody's negating that the student's safety is important. So we have three different options. We can have them make a possible insubstantial change or modification as a temporary stockpile location until they can get their construction schedule back together, or we can actually make them go through a modification process where butters are notified, and they come back before the board for review. We can actually have review of the actual site that they disturbed currently with some of the leftover escrow money from the particular project, or we could tell them that they need to stop work and they need to put everything back into the original, the natural state, and to use the soccer field as the actual stockpile area as stated by the board.
Okay. What do you think? Can I ask a question? Yeah, sure. Go ahead. Can identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, I'm Patrick Woolley, Senior Director of Facilities at Brook School.
Hi. So I have a question. And you're new?
Yes, I've been there since July 5th.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. I wish I was here and a better chance to meet all of you and a better...
Well, I think I certainly appreciate you being here.
Well, no.
That helps.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what's the situation at the original intended stockpile area by the soccer field? Has anything happened there?
Yes. We're starting to grade, because it's my intent to try to get that hydroceded and stabilized before winter.
I see.
That is one of the reasons we wanted to stockpile across the street further away from the lake. It would also allow us to re-enter a different route to the construction site when the backfill is brought in.
Right.
And that would allow us to basically finish the field and stabilize it before winter, which I really want to do, because it's much closer to the lake than the stockpile across the street.
Right. Which I think you know we're very sensitive to, because that's the sole supply of drinking water.
I am learning very quickly.
Yes.
My job before was at Wellesley College, and it bordered a great pond, Lake Waban.
Yep.
And we're also on the Charles River watershed.
Yep.
And I guess I was doing some of this out of ignorance, which I call this meeting tuition for me, in that we were very sensitive. We also had our own wells, so all of our property was zone one, zone two. So the intent was really to ensure the safety of our students and try to make it better so that the site for stockpiling was further away from the lake.
Right.
I've never... I have to admit, I've never had to go to a planning board meeting for soil disturbance. I always worked with ConCon at Wellesley, so this one is quite new to me.
So just two other questions for me.
Mm-hmm.
When do you think you'll move the material back to the soccer field area?
The material is currently there, and we're working it. We... Since we were told to stop working across the street, we're currently stockpiling about 3,000 yards to go back. That was the soil that was going to be stored over across the street, and we hope to have that out and graded and hydroceded probably by mid to late November.
I see.
So again, the intent is stabilize as much as we can...
Right.
...before we hit winter.
And I'm just curious, is there a reason that you didn't call the planning department just to say we're doing something different?
No, I should have done that. Hindsight's always 20/20.
Yeah.
I did go over a measure, and if the contractor puts a silt fence in the proper area, it would have been well away from wetlands and any soil disturbance. So I thought we're pretty much in the clear.
Okay.
But there will be a required filing with conservation as well?
I'm meeting with them next week.
Okay.
Yeah. Appreciate you being here.
Oh, no, I appreciate you.
Was your civil engineer... Did they have any... Did you discuss this approach with your civil engineer? Did they offer...
I'm not sure who is civil engineer in the project. I'm trying to still get up to speed.
Okay.
We did have some conversations with the construction team. As it was explained to them, nobody seemed to have that much of a problem and thought we should proceed. Again, because this was really a quick decision made, because we wanted to get the trucks out of there before our students came back. That was really what was pushing this whole thing. We were under a hurry. We couldn't delay school, and we wanted to make it safer when they come back. And now any truck going on main campus is under escort, but we were talking just lines of trucks going all the time. And when the camps were there, we had more control on the kids, because they had counselors there and everything else. By virtue of dealing with high school students, they're a lot more mobile. And of course, they're always on their mobile phones, and so they don't notice things like Big Mac trucks behind them. But we're very, very concerned about the safety of our students. That is our number-one priority.
So when we went over, we saw that the topsoil was cleared?
Yes.
So why... I mean, I saw the... Why was that done?
Because you don't... What you really don't want to do... I mean, I also work for the Arnold Air Freedom, so I have a long background in landscape, landscape history, that type of thing. What you don't want to do is put your subsoil on top, because it's really not made to grow plants. So by virtue of stockpiling your topsoil, that is what is a good medium for the plant materials. Then, when you're done with the subsoil, you put the topsoil back on, and you have a good planting medium for grass or whatever you're going to do. I will say, North Andover soils are pretty tough, in that our soils, anyway, don't drain very well, so we're trying to be very careful with how we treat the soils. They don't work it when it's wet. You know, it kind of irritates me when everybody calls it dirt. It's not dirt. It's soil. Dirt swatches sweep out of your kitchen. And it's really just a... It's just very important to get the soils as done best as you can. So that's what we're trying to do.
And so what are you going to do with the site across the street where your stock... Where the stockpiles went?
Yeah. We have minimal amount of material there. The topsoil has been separated, so it's in different piles. And when we get out... When we exit the site, it will be graded back to finished grade. Topsoils will go back on top, then we'll hydrocede it back to a hayfield.
The pictures on the screen are actually of the soccer field. So this is the stockpiling that's going on in the designated area. It is a lot larger than was proposed on the actual plans. So it is quite a full area over on the soccer site.
So what's the reason for that, the bust in the estimate in terms of the...
I'm not sure. I think there were some... Two things. I think there were some miscalculations on what had to come out. And two, I think what you were probably told, I don't know what you were told, but there's about 6,300 that's going to stay there and 3,000 coming back. So actually, a third of that is coming back to go to the center.
To the actual...
Yeah. And I'm not sure they probably included that in their calculations. They probably just did a rough cut-and-fill calculation.
Any other questions?
I have one. One last.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just because you're new, I think I don't need to ask this, but I will.
Okay.
And I know Norman's well aware of this, but the limits on fertilizer to either organic or slow-release nitrogen and phosphorus-free because of the proximity to the lake?
Right. We have conducted soil analysis. We are going to use that as a guide, but I know phosphorus. At the Charles River, phosphorus was the number-one target for, you know, cleaning up.
Right.
So I'm well aware of that. We're going to be very careful.
Great.
Just to give you some idea of background, I have run a golf course for the college on the watershed area, zone two. So we were very attentive to anything we did. We increased buffer zones. These just nowhere to get down. So we are going to be very careful with that.
Great.
Especially with the phosphorus.
Great. Thanks.
The available phosphorus in the soil currently is very low, so we're going to take a look to see what we can do.
So Rebecca, what do you recommend here?
I am recommending, based upon what materials I've received and the information and the discussions that we've had, is that an insubstantial change for a temporary stockpile with conditions that the stormwater review be conducted for the site that's been disturbed, and then any other conditions in terms of making sure the site is revegetated and brought back to its normal state, or do we keep it open, because the solar project is going to go and construct the same thing, and would that be more disturbance for the site if you put it back to its original state to get tore up later on in the springtime-slash-swimmer time? So that would be a decision I'd leave up to the board, but whether or not it gets put back to its original state, or whether or not it stays constructed until and if the solar project gets in play. And then we can condition that that get recorded at the registry of deeds, the insubstantial change.
Pete, you want to say something?
No.
What do people think with that approach?
I think the substantial change is a good approach. Our process, does that usually require a letter or something from the applicant saying that we'd like this to be considered and an insubstantial change?
Yes.
So I think that process should still play out.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a really good point about if we approve the solar project, you know, what to do there, because I just don't know what would be best. If it's going to snow in the winter, if that's going to be helpful, detrimental. I mean, I think I would leave that to people who know what.
I mean, I think the good thing is that when they come back, this formal insubstantial thing will come back maybe at our next meeting or one after that, and we'll have the advantage of another two to four weeks, and we can make that call then. But yeah, we clearly would integrate the two.
It would be nice if they came back at the same time as the solar project. It would be nice.
Yep.
Okay.
We can do that, so would they be able to, from a planning perspective, resume work until the next meeting? So there's still to stop work until September 19, our next meeting.
So what do people...
How does the conservation...
I was going to ask, do you know when the conservation?
I think it's next... I'd have to look at my calendar. I think it... They meet on Wednesdays, correct?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
So I think it's next Wednesday. I think it's the 13th. I'd have to look.
And is it a filing that you're doing with them?
Yes.
Or so you have a file? And is it a filing that you're doing with them or, so you have a filing? So, then we'll be fine for September 19th because they have an enforcement order to see.
Okay.
So, just so I'm clear and I don't step on my own toes again, we should not touch that site until we get ConCon to come back here.
That's right.
Yeah, and what I would recommend is just stay in touch with Rebecca as frequently as you can. And if you have any doubts about something you want to do, call her. That's the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, we appreciate you coming in.
Oh, no, I appreciate being here.
And working with us and us, so.
Okay, and Rebecca, I will be in touch?
Yes.
So, I'm clear on what the next steps are?
Yeah.
Because I'm terrible at taking notes sometimes.
No, I will definitely be in touch.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
So, the next?
Is Jim going to come?
He was supposed to be here. I had notified him, but he is not here. And I'm not too sure if 1600 Osgood is out in the hallway, but nobody is here that is supposed to be presenting at 701 695 Salem Street. And I don't know if somebody is outside for 1600 Osgood. I can go check unless you want to.
Why don't we check just to be safe and then we'll just have our own discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know. We tricked them. We tricked them. Well, we're going to see them tomorrow.
We'll be seeing them Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes, Thursday at 6:00 PM at the site.
Oh, okay.
I guess I'll show up at like 8:00 o'clock.
So, I don't know if you want to go through any of the other items on the agenda?
Well, let's talk about, if we're not going to talk about 1600 directly, let's talk about the MMOD because Suzanne's here and Gene's here. And talk about that because I think we really need to, what I would say is two things. One is that we need a framework for addressing this and we've talked about it a little bit, but not a lot, about how we get all the relevant pieces in. And then, it's going to be the process we take and how long we take. It's, I think, going to be according to the timetable we set as we've stress, but so.
That's kind of what the next agenda item is for a framework for recreational.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's why I think we should talk about that directly, so.
Sounds great.
Suzanne, yeah.
So, what you have in your packets is sort of a comprehensive, relatively comprehensive background materials on creating a recreational marijuana bylaw. What we've, what we included in the packet was the medical marijuana overlay district zoning bylaw, the site plan review zoning bylaw, the new general law, which is chapter 55, which includes the changes to the medical marijuana law and also the marijuana law. And then, also some information regarding Washington and their experience in Washington and what sort of land use regulations they put in there. And then, you have that framework bylaw that we drafted that combines the state and local. And it just is merely to give you a framework to start from. And there's a lot of questions that the planning board has to consider as land use policy group, body. That's, you know, your role is to make the determinations. And those are essentially like what, what type of medical use is appropriate? How you want to zone for that because the town and the zoning, the planning board have the ability to prohibit some of those uses in some areas in town or completely prohibit particular uses in the town. So, it's what, where, where do you want this to, you know, where do you want the use to occur? And then, there's the timing issue. What's the timing of presenting this to town meeting? And when you feel you've gone through the exercise of making those decisions and drafting a comprehensive bylaw? What time are you prepared to do that? And then, you get to the, oh, and then, there's the Osgood, the fact that there's a smart growth overlay bylaw existing on that particular site, 1600 Osgood at this moment, whether or not those are compatible uses. So, you'd also be looking at adopting or recommending a marijuana bylaw, but you have to also look at what else is allowed on any, in any site or any district that you're considering doing that. But particularly in this one that's before you, it's the 1600 Osgood, is there's a smart growth overlay district and there's, if there's, underlying is industrials. You have to consider what uses are compatible. And in speaking to the town manager, he would recommend that the smart growth be sunsetted if there is an issuance on a medical or on a marijuana special permit. And it's my understanding that the developer has also agreed to that, to have some sort of sunset provision tied to the issuance of a special permit. And then, sort of your next issue that you deal with is the how, like the density and dimensional, the parking requirements and the loading requirements and all that. That's kind of the nuts and bolts of the bylaw. And so, we've presented to you for your review, sort of that framework information where you can, you know, those questions are teed up and we can go through this in a step-by-step manner. The next meeting, we can like pull out one of the questions. The first question would be what? You know, what type of uses will be allowed and have that discussion or anyway the board actually wants to go through those steps, that process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As we consider this, I feel like it's being brought to our attention now because there's a specific project in mind at a specific location, but are we, as a board, grappling with what do we do about the zoning just in this one particular location? Or are we being asked to look at more generally, how does the entire town deal with this? Or how does this affect other areas of the town other than this one location?
So, currently, there is a moratorium on the marijuana use or the marijuana zoning in the town. And that is, I, you know, there's a, the annual town meeting set in May. And typically, what you would do is you would have something, ideally, there'd be something presented for that meeting to sort of step in place of that moratorium. So, yeah, both of those issues are before you.
Okay.
The general, broader, how does the, what land use considerations there are in terms of the fact that marijuana is now legal in Massachusetts and there's a moratorium. Even though the moratorium does go until November of 2018, that would require, you know, another town meeting.
Right.
And so, those are the issues that you're dealing with now.
So, I firmly believe we should deal with both of them. I think it addresses a couple of things. One, as much as we're going to talk about 1600 Osgood, it's not the only issue that we need to deal with. Our authority and responsibility is much broader than that. It's an important one, but I think it should be all. Two, if we're going to go back to town meeting with something that is substantially different, seems to me if we had a complete marijuana zoning ordinance, that would be substantially different than what was presented before. So, if we can come to something that everyone's comfortable with and passes this board, that it can be presented to town meeting, I think that would be substantially different, which is, seems to be legally important when a warrant article fails, which it did. So, I think that's another reason they should be addressed together. And three, I have yet to hear any reason why medical and recreational or over 21 should be, from a land use perspective, treated differently. So, if they're not from land use, if they should be treated the same, then I think it should be one ordinance. It can have different parts, things like that, different overlays. So, I would, I'm strongly for treating it together. One question I have is if we can get a map that shows in regards to where things are at and the how? Where are the schools? 500 feet from a school, 1,000 feet from a school? I don't know if we want to go in. It's a discussion to have. I don't know if we want to go into parks, if we, things like that. Maybe where residential districts are. Because I have a feeling if we block out all the residential districts and we block out everything that's 500 feet from a school, we're going to be, find there's a small area where we could legitimately zone for marijuana-related businesses. So, I think that would be useful to have in starting the how discussion.
So, can I ask another question? And this sort of ties into one of the bigger thing. It sort of plays up what was just said, but when I think about a big, general sweeping, town-wide consideration here, what jumps to my mind is this master plan committee. And are they, is this something that they're looking at at all? Are they thinking about the marijuana issue in the master plan committee or how that affects it? Or is it really just housing issues in the master plan committee? I guess I don't want to get ahead of what the important work that they're doing and the studies that they're doing. And if we're presented with, if we, if it makes more sense to face this in a way and deal with the specific concern that's being brought to us about a potential business opportunity that might come to the town and let the master plan committee play out on the other issues, then I think there is a really legitimate reason to face it if that, but I don't, I guess I just don't know.
The specific topic hasn't come up yet. What to do on the 21st is the existing condition we want in the public forum. So, I plan to talk to the consultants about that. We don't Thursday night and how they would address that. So, it's part of the future.
Right.
But it's not the existing conditions today, so.
But is it something that they, that will be considered and that they're going to study and think about and make a recommendation on? Do you anticipate that or is it still?
I think a little bit, the problem is that if you look as part of the overall master plan, one of the things they're going to look at is zoning broadly put. And, you know, they might end up with something substantial that make up something that's almost de minimis. The problem is how, just exactly what you're saying, is how do we interject this in the context of that? Because I don't think we know for sure what we're going to end up with. If we knew for sure that there were going to be massive changes, that we were going to reconsider virtually everything that we did, we may say, let's hold this over and integrate it into that. But if chances, chances are going to be more insubstantial, then, you know, we may still want to go forward. So, it's, it's a little bit of a tricky issue, I think.
There's also a timing issue.
Yeah.
Because if we don't put any zoning into place by at this point, November 2018, or 27, yeah, 2018. Licenses can be issued as of June 2018. So, if we don't have any zoning in place and licenses are issued and we zone afterwards, things could potentially be grandfathered in and we don't get to set the zoning the way we want it. So, that could potentially be a problem if we don't have a zoning article that's adopted prior to really June of 2018. It could, that could be a problem in terms of, in terms of regulating.
Okay. So, Pete, you have any thoughts? I, Chris?
No, I just have a question. I was going through the pages that you gave us. And some of them started like sort of in the middle, but this is the medical marijuana overlay district. And I was reading through the definitions and the definition of a registered marijuana dispensary. I mean, is that what we're talking about, a medical marijuana dispensary?
So, what section are you looking at?
I'm looking at 812-4. And it just says, I'm just, it means that it's a non, not-for-profit entity.
So, that's the existing medical marijuana overlay district.
Okay.
That's current right now.
Okay.
That is applicable to that parcel and whole, right within that overlay district.
Okay, and so, that's part of the problem.
Right. And so, one of the things that we did is we looked at that, which is how we are regulating in terms of land use medical marijuana at this moment and taking those site plan concerns, the site plan review, and so incorporated the two in the middle. And so, those definitions are specifically for medical marijuana.
All right, yeah.
Uses. And it's a different, it's a different state law right now and it's going to be regulated in a different manner. So, we have to bring our zoning into sort of, to meet the new requirements of the law.
Okay.
But as I say.
But we don't really know what they are.
Well, we do, well, we know that there's state laws in pass, but we do not know what the regulations are because the regulations haven't been passed. But we also do know that the medical marijuana portion of the law is in effect until, I believe it's 2019 is when it switches over to the new law. So, it's complicated at this point.
Because that was kind of a surprise. That was like, what?
What is an RMD?
No, that it was, it was nonprofit.
Oh, that's what the medical marijuana facilities have to operate under a nonprofit at this point. Yeah, that's a state law.
I can't imagine why that would, why it would do that.
What we have in front of us here, you know, the opportunities, not, not just looking at dispensaries, it's production, manufacturing, research, retail component, you know, all that we can talk about as we move forward here to have a comprehensive bylaw. I think we're missing out if we don't touch on every aspect of that.
Just to clarify, I mean, just because we zone for something doesn't mean that a business is just going to pop up just because we say that, you know, retail is allowed in one area or a laboratory is allowed in another. It just means that those are uses that are allowed, most likely, I would assume, by a special permit or some other thing. I mean, there's still going to be a lot that goes into it. I think now we're just kind of at the moment going to be talking about what theoretically could be allowed if someone wanted to come up with a business, get a special permit and go through all the processes. So, I just think that's important to remember as we make zoning regulations.
I mean, I think in the end, as I look at it, as I intend you put up, you know, I think some of the key characteristics is, obviously, we talked about location. Where do you put the use? We have to manage that. We also have to decide on the number of permutations of the use that we would allow. So, cultivation, retail, you know, the so-called manufacturing, if they make goods off of it. And then, the, perhaps the pharmaceutical use, I mean, that we've talked about, the laboratory use. Again, I don't know what the answer is, but there's probably three or four different permutations of use that we will end up with when the smoke clears. And then, there is the intensity of the use that, you know, how much is, what's the maximum size? What's the setbacks? Ties into the uses. I think if we hit all of those dimensions, we'll have everything that we need.
Right. And one of the ways that we organize that in this framework is that we called out, there's different definitions of uses within the state law. And so, we just brought those into the zoning bylaw. And so, we wanted to make sure that each of those uses that are allowed under the state law are sort of addressed in our zoning bylaw so that you don't have an instance where somebody comes in and says, well, I want to do X under marijuana. And then, there's some concern, is this allowed? Does it, what category does this fall within? And if somebody's allowed to do it under the state law and they're licensed to do it, but we don't address it in our zoning bylaw, then that adds to confusion. And we're trying to like limit confusion and set out the, you know, sort of like the standards by which people can obtain their permits. So, we're taking that language and we put it into here. Now, in some instances, you'll want to go through those definitions of uses and then you can make a determination whether you think that where each use should either go. Do they all go in the same district? Do they go in different parcels? Or is there certain ones that maybe the town doesn't even want to permit at all?
So, we clearly have, one follow-up is you, Rebecca, if you can take a version of the zoning map and maybe overlay some of the information they tend to look for. I'm not sure how well it'll play, but, you know, let's, let's see what we can do. Suzanne, what would you like us to do? Would you like us to review this and get back to you with comments?
Yep.
What would you like?
Yes, I think that would be good. I think maybe what would be helpful if we, everybody reviewed it and then at the next, I don't know if you want to go to the next meeting, just to sort of take one piece of it and say,
Okay.
To discuss the first issue as to what type of uses should be allowed in, under the zoning bylaw? Because that, you get into the whole issue of whether you're going to have retail and, and what is that? So, that might be a helpful way to do it.
Yes, go ahead.
So, Suzanne, to your discussion about uses.
Mm-hmm.
Are there some uses or categories where the termination is not within the control of the town due to either current or possible future state law or regulations? That the town may be prohibited from determining certain uses based on the state. Is that?
So, that's, there's a difference in the new law. So, under the medical marijuana law, the state said you had to permit it somewhere in your town. And because it was a vertical license, the license holder could operate all, essentially utilize all those uses. And once you had to allow that in your town, you had to put it somewhere. So, what we did is it's over in the, in the whole world parcel. And in this instance, with this new law, the town has the ability to vote because, so North Andover voted, it didn't pass here, the legalization of marijuana didn't pass here. So, that by town meeting, you can prohibit some of the uses. You can choose a use. You can say the, well, I'll just take retail as an example. I'm not making a statement on whether or not retail should be prohibited, but I'm just taking that one as an example. So, you would say if there's a termination where we want to prohibit retail marijuana. So you would say, if there's a termination where we want to prohibit retail marijuana in town, then that could go through a general bylaw to prohibit that use, and then you would also do that within your zoning table. So you'd have that as part of your table of uses, and it would be a no across the board. And you'd also have a general bylaw that says-
So are you saying that if a town actually voted yes on the thing, they couldn't do that?
They have to go through a different process.
They have to go through a different process.
Yeah, they'd have to go to the ballot.
Is it anticipated that that process is going to be the subject of legal challenges? Like if towns, like I've heard some pushback around that? Like are we, if we sort of selectively say, no, you can't do this because we voted no, are we setting ourselves up for a potential legal battle?
What I think, I think the only issue would be the process. And I, so personally, I haven't heard that. Maybe there is all this, you know, concern about that, but it would probably only be the process, as to whether or not you can do it by a vote of the town meeting or you have to go to a referendum. Because it's not, like, as far as I know, I don't know if anybody has any other information, there's no lawsuit filed at this moment. There's nothing. You know, I would not do something on the fear of litigation. That's always, I'm sure, we all know that, right?
I'm a litigator, so I-
We all like litigation, so why would we not do it?
I have concerns about it. I'm not sure, you can legally take a vote that happened several years ago about one thing and make it mean something else. So, but I don't think anything will happen until a bylaw or until something happens that somebody doesn't like, you know? But it seems to me, I'm not sure, that it seems to be more of a town meeting, board of selectmen issue. We can, there are also ordinances you can do to limit the number of retail, you know, based on a certain amount. So to that, do we know how many package store licenses are issued in the town? Is that something we can find out?
I can't find out. I remember, I thought it was, I can't say it with certainty, but I can get those numbers for you.
Okay. So, everybody okay with just providing the feedback and then we can, next meeting, we can start working through it in detail? I think that's the right way to do it. So thank you for putting it together. It's a tough one to wrestle, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, this is just sort of, I think this will help just guide the discussion. We can take it as that, you know, as that is something just to guide your discussion and start the process at all.
Okay.
All right. I guess stay here.
You're certainly welcome. So I see the 1600 Osgood team is here. So you're, I don't know if you had anything to show us. We have something here. That's a discussion, so I don't know if that's what you want to talk about or you want to talk about something different. It's up to you. It's all yours.
Dan Leary with the Osgood team. I think, given, and my apologies for us being a few minutes late, I think it would maybe be best if we just moved over to the Osgood discussion and any, I'm not sure if you have a question?
Well, that's what I asked you.
Yes, please. I was unsure if you were asking for comments on this discussion. Okay. Yeah, if we could do that, please.
Yeah.
And Emily Khatonik, a member of our team, joining us tonight. Unfortunately, Hooks Johnson could not be here this evening. We apologize for that. So I'll do my best to fill his shoes. The agenda is really just intended to do a couple of things, but namely to answer the unanswered questions we couldn't answer last time. And we've put that information out there so you can see, as well as anything that just needed further clarification. Then we have a summary and just wanted to briefly talk about next steps. And I think you've probably seen it, but we've, like we said in the last time here, we keep this database we call the DEC, and it's intended to be the Goldilocks 360-degree view of everything that we're looking at doing with this project. So REV 2 was posted to this agenda also. It's nearly 50 slides. We don't intend to go through all of that in any sitting, but if you had questions on that, we'd be happy to answer them. A lot of those slides are incorporated in this presentation we're going to talk about next. But before I start with the agenda and the sort of the presentation we put together, just a couple of quick updates, if I could, please. First, we have a name for the Massachusetts Innovation Works. We spent about two months trying to put together a name that was able to tie together the Massachusetts Life Sciences and Biotechnology Magnet that we have here in the Commonwealth, the innovation and high-tech soul of the project, of the vision that we're proposing here. And really, the revitalization of the Merrimack Valley Works is a bustling epicenter of commerce. So we arrived at the Massachusetts Innovation Works. And from a sort of an outreach and marketing perspective, we add, we have a descriptor that we add to it, which is the Center for Advanced Cannabinoid Research, Manufacturing, and Entrepreneurship. The Center for Advanced Cannabinoid Research, Manufacturing, and Entrepreneurship. So we believe that with the name and the descriptor, it'll be fitting for the building, the history, and the vision that we have. We're very excited about the name. Second is, we're also excited to report, we have a growing list of companies that want to be part of this. Companies, institutions, we're seeing more and more interest every day. Unfortunately, we also have a second list that's starting to develop, and that's the folks that pitched a tent elsewhere, namely to our own team's inability to get the required votes we needed the last time around. So our objective is to make sure we get it right this time and go through this process. But we're so grateful for the support we've seen from the town in the last month and a half, especially Ms. Egan's work on the bylaw. It's incredible. It's a fantastic start. We're so happy to see that progress. And we think that the next time around, we're going to have success with the town. So onto the, onto the regular presentation. So the first question that was, answer was on the timeline slide, and I guess to Mr. Simon's point, we just, we updated a slide to show a timeline. It's just our own team's activities. We just, we don't, we don't intend to ask the planning board to make any decisions faster than the planning board makes decisions. We just wanted to show the schedule and the tempo that our team's working on in order to fulfill this vision that we have. Second question on that slide, asked by Mr. Boynton on the Innovation Center, who's leading it? This was a really good question. When we put this presentation together and sort of the Goldilocks approach, we envisioned we'd be in here talking about cultivation and the things that require licenses, and we thought, well, the innovation side, center side of things wasn't necessarily what people wanted to hear about in this forum, so we didn't initially include it. But I'm glad you did, and I'm really happy that you asked because there's some great things that we wanted to elaborate on in this presentation. So if you, and I think Hooks mentioned, you know, he and SAR would be leading it. Their BIOS were in the BIO packet we passed out before. But if you go to the next slide, please, Rebecca? We put together just a real high level, if you have to envision what this is. We're not, we're not trying to, Bell Labs was there before. We're not trying to replicate Bell Labs. We're not going out to hire a bunch of scientists and engineers to work on something. Really, what we're building is an innovation center that has really four parts. It's epicenter, is what we're calling, it's an industry excellence center. This is a place where, when you have an industry that's kind of growing out of the ground, no pun intended, and you need to get consensus and bring minds together and ideas together to work on things, you've got to focus that around something. And this project is exactly the type of thing that the nation and the world needs to focus, an industry excellence center. And around this, we really have three areas, and this is probably more answering Mr. Boynton's question. We have an industry R and D component to this, where we have companies like the one showing up there, lighting companies, Fortune 500 lighting companies, that want to conduct research using their technologies in a facility where they can't find a facility like this to do those types of tests. And that's going to be led by really a business development team that probably looks more like, it's a component of property management and outreach. The next one coming around clockwise is an incubator. It's really sort of run like a venture capital group. And this leadership is really a ventures team, and this is a group that's out trying to find the upcoming technologies that need a place to incubate, a place to develop and collaborate. They may need seed funding, and that's being run, the leadership on that is what we call in the ventures team. And we have a list of those as well that we pulled together. And then finally is a component, which is, really, it's a cooperative effort for basic applied research. And this is where we envision a medical advisory board that would be leading this effort. And this type of research, we've been approached by a number of doctors and institutions that are looking to do this type of research, can't do it at the place they're at because of the challenges federally, we have a different law than we have in Massachusetts. And because of that, there's a phenomenal opportunity to pull, you know, again, I'll call it, it's an endocannabinoid revolution that's starting to sprout out of the science for how to use cannabinoids to better people's lives. So that's, that gives maybe a 360-degree view of the leadership team. Inside the DEC, there's a couple other slides that speak to sort of the wire diagram, the organizational chart of how it gets put together, and some other things there. But we hope this provides some background. Any questions before I go to the next one? Mr. Simon's asked, this is an innovative and maybe obvious idea of the co-location. Why hasn't it been done elsewhere? Excellent question. So we have this other slide called the Business Opportunity. We could hit that if, maybe Rebecca, if you could go to the next slide, please. You know, just, I don't want to repeat things that maybe we've already said in the past, but it's a very early industry. Lack of scale keeps cultivation operations costs high, and lack of facility and collaboration slows research and innovation. And we have a list of our competitive advantages. We're ready. The scale is ready. We've got a phenomenal location in Massachusetts where we're seeing this industry start to emerge. There's great synergy between the two here already at the complex because this is the legacy of the plant, that's already been there, and the team is coming together very nicely. So I'm not sure if that helps answer your question.
Not really, other than I guess you're saying, because there's no scale in Colorado, nobody's thought of this yet, or Washington, or California, or any of the other places. I still don't understand why it hasn't happened in California.
It is, every state that approaches this does it slightly differently, and they learn from the previous state. Colorado has a vertical component to it. So the way that the new law is rolled out in this state, it couldn't be more ideal for this opportunity. And there's no other state that has the structure that this one does to allow this, is one. But the second thing I'll say is that this is, this is a nationwide, there's nationwide momentum that's happening here. When I got up and spoke at town meeting, I said, at some point, you know, veterans could be helped by, you know, with PTSD, and, you know, as soon as the federal government recognizes this, we'll start to see that happen. I didn't know it actually happened. Who knew it actually happened in July this year? So, you know, there's just, there's a momentum component to this, too. So the timing is just right on this, for this to happen here. I'd be happy to, this might be another thing to discuss on Thursday night if I still didn't answer that very well. But we can talk about that in a minute, some of the folks that might be able to answer that even better than I, Thursday night. So the next question is from Mr. Goldberg. What license will you seek from the state? What's going on in the facility and, you know, even what's going on down the hall from cultivation, I think were some of the words. Excellent question. We're seeking currently the RMD license under the current statute, or I should say, the current and outgoing statute, and we'll seek to convert our facility in North Andover to cultivation and project manufacturing licenses. No retail. And no retail in North Andover, excuse me. But I'm not sure. I think that's a pretty straightforward answer. We included this slide on extraction and processing because this begged a great question. Well, what's extraction and processing? Extraction is the process of taking the vegetative product that we're growing here and turning it into an oil that can be used for onward sale of products. So it's probably the most fundamental processing of, you know, the processing of the manufacturing license. So on Thursday night, we'll be able to show some more pictures and talk about this at length, in case there's any questions. But this is a, this is a common activity that, under the current law, is done, under the current law, and usually in the same facility almost always now. But this is something that'll be happening inside the property as well. On the next question-
So this, how big are these things for like extraction and processing? Can you give me some idea of the footprint of a typical thing?
So we'll have a room dedicated, an area of the building, a room dedicated to it, but, I mean, to put it in perspective, less than 5% of the total area would be towards this. And when you come on Thursday, we will be doing a walking tour. We're going to show all the different steps with renderings and photos of the process that would be happening in a specific room, as well as a site plan layout that shows the room that we're designing right now to support the different activities. So we'll be able to answer that one much better on Thursday. You'll be able to walk right into the part of the building that's going to do it. Water consumption. How solid are your numbers, have they been tested recently? We continue testing over the course of the last two weeks, scheduled testing, like I mentioned the last time. We've reconditioned the wells. We've done flow testing on the wells. I'll call these the initial flow testing. There's one more stress test that we do, which is several days of testing a well. But in our initial results, we found that one well was producing more than it was rated for when it was installed, and one producing less than it was. Overall, our numbers, I don't think I show them actually in this presentation, but overall, our numbers are, we're still well within, we have more than enough water that we can produce on site to, for our cultivation watering system.
Can you tell us what the numbers are?
Yes. One of the wells, one of the wells was 83 gallons per minute, one was 23 gallons per minute. And I was going to ask Rebecca if you happen to have the DEC 2 up there, we could show it on the-
Do you happen to know what slide?
Twenty-ish? Between 20 and 30.
There's the cultivation water site plan?
Mr. Boynton, so if you, if you look at the eight o'clock side of the picture, you'll see where there's an overwritten 83 gallons per minute well existing. It's right above the bottom left-hand corner. It's right above the bottom left-hand corner.
What slide?
24 in the master deck.
So I see the 83 and the 23.
Yeah. So they, they were previously, if I remember correctly, they were previously 70 and 120, so a total of 190 gallons per minute. And we've reduced that down to 106. And then if you go to, Rebecca, if you could please go to the, the slide above this. Here, here you can see the math on that. So we're in the, uh, third bullet cultivation requires 0.11 gallons per square foot per day. And, um, how do we know that? Our, so our, our head cultivator, um, physically programs that into a computer and that's what each plant's delivered. So that's based on, uh, what we anticipate would be coming out of it from similar operations.
So between two of them, yeah, I'm just doing some simple math. You said 100 gallons a minute. So that's 6,000 an hour. So if you take 6,000 times 168, what do you get in a week?
Well, so, so it's 152,000 gallons a day.
You don't have, at that rate, you're never going to get anywhere close to that. Am I missing something? If, if you got 100 gallons a minute, right? So that's 6,000 per hour.
So, so if you go to the.
Times 24 hours.
If you go to the cultivation, um, we have 0.11 gallons per, oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca, uh, yeah. On the third bullet down where it says cultivation requires 0.11 gallons per square foot per day.
The 83 is 119 per day, the 23 is 33. If you add those together, it's 152 per day.
Okay. So at, at scale, at the full build-out, we're using 33,000 gallons per day in a million square feet.
That includes what you get from recapture.
Exactly. There's two forms of recapture in there. The first one, I'm sorry, I don't want to talk over.
Here's what I'm just struggling with. I'll share the question. I see where you get 152,000 gallons per day. I also see your estimates of, um, cultivation requirements, which are below that.
Yes.
I see that. I, let me just ask a tangential question here and then I'll get back to the point. But the tangential question is, that estimated usage per day, that is totally predicated on what you showed us at the last meeting, which is the building inside the building. It's predicated on those containment structures inside the building. That has a substantial impact on the requirement or, or the estimated water consumption and water recovery. Is that correct?
Exactly.
So, so these numbers rely on, in fact, using those building inside the building type approach.
Put it different.
I'm just making sure that I understand.
No, yes, you're exactly, it requires indoor closed HVAC.
Closed.
Yes.
Closed structure.
Yes.
A closed structure inside the building, not the building, an inner building. What you called at the last meeting, the building within the building.
That, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I had that. So let me now go back if I haven't lost you.
Yes, yes.
I understand where you have the 152,000 a day. I understand your projected usage is less than that. But what I'm having trouble reconciling is you've been telling us all along that these wells produced a million gallons a day.
Yes.
That's a big number and that's very encouraging. But now you're telling us, if I understand correctly, you've tested and it's producing 150,000 a day. So that's like a factor of almost one tenth of what you were telling us the wells used to produce. Why such a huge difference?
Yeah. Great question. When this, when, um, Lucent Technologies was operating at a, at a million gallons per day of deionized water, they had several more wells on the property which have been closed up. Some of them are further out to the north parcel. There's one that's on the other side of the railroad tracks. All that existed out there. They were, um, closed up and they probably don't need to be used again. We have no intention of reusing them again. The, the, the two wells that we have here that remain are two of, you know, what, what was originally rated is around 200. I can't remember what we had on rev one. I think it was around 200, call it 250,000 gallons per minute. And, um, or, or around 200, I'm sorry, it was 190 gallons per minute is what we had on rev one. And, and now we're at 106. So that did drop down. Now that's after reconditioning an existing well. So if we find that for some reason our, our, our map, order of math was still off by an order of magnitude on this, we still have, um, the, the, the supply right there and we still have the ability to re, um, redo the well within 50 feet of it. And, 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 and basically redo the well i- if we need to. So.
What do you mean redo the well?
Reopen a well?
Uh, not reopen it, but re-drill a well.
Re-drill one of these two?
If, if necessary, but our, our, our tests have proven so far it's not, it's not needed.
But what, what are these, the two wells that add up, oh, wells four and five. You're talking about redoing four or five?
We, redoing wells four and five. So the only thing we're talking about today is the existing wells.
So why, why use as a baseline that the wells were producing a million gallons a day? Because are you implying, are you using that number to imply that the site can produce that? I'm just puzzled why you're using a million gallons a day because you're, you've tested and it's way below that.
We're, we're using that number because when we told the town that we don't need to pull water from the, the drinking water supply, maybe the town didn't believe us. And maybe the town didn't know that in its peak, Lucent was making a million gallons a day of water right there on the, on the site. And because of the, the geology and the aquifers that exist underneath it, um, this is besides the energy infrastructure. There's a tremendous water, subsurface water infrastructure underneath the property. There's, there's no reason, um, we, we, we do that to impress on, on the legacy of, of the site. Now granted, we're down to, to 190 gallons per minute from, from where it was at its peak. So we're down to a quarter of the, the capacity that still exists or, or a little bit less. But that's still far more than what we need.
106 gallons.
106.
Yeah.
But, but still far, far less than what we actually need, namely because of your first point. For, for every, um, every gallon of water that's going into this facility to, to, uh, to water the plants, seven tenths of that gallon is recirculated and, and recovered, maybe more. But these are, these are conservative numbers. Again, and the recirculation has to do with, just to restate my point earlier, these are numbers that get programmed to, to deliver a certain amount of water to each plant based on what we, what our crop scientists know that those plants will need. A certain amount gets, um, uh, recaptured, the nutrients gets recaptured. It literally drips through the bottom of the plant, comes back into the system and gets recirculated. And then there's an additional 20% and that number is probably conservative. It gets pulled out of the air because of the building within the building. And, and it gets put back into the, the nutrient system. So, so that's how we get to 33,000 gallons per day at scale.
Without, uh, you know, we ought to probably, but one other question. How, how deep are these wells roughly?
80 feet. I think 75 to 85 feet. One 75-ish, one's around 85 feet.
Okay. Why don't you just skip on that?
And there's some neat pictures of them on the, the next slide, Rebecca. Uh, I'm sorry, of the presentation. So this, this was completed a couple of weeks ago. This is the process of, um, re, reconditioning the well and doing the initial flow testing. Getting beautiful water out of it, which was, has already been tested. That was the first test we did was to prove the water was the quality that we needed it to be. The second one is to, to ensure we can get the volume out of them that we, that we need. So. Next question. Mr. Boynton asked a great question. Is this what the room, grow rooms, rooms will look like? Was this the thinking to have one large room to occupy the space? Our intent is to utilize large grow rooms in this project. This, uh, last week we completed a design charrette where we, um, we, we, we did a number of things. We pulled together, um, uh, our architects, our engineers. We pulled together the, 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 the building inspector, the fire chief. And we all came together because coming up with the size room, um, for, to answer this question is really a, it's sort of a three-way tug-of-war. Uh, on one hand, you have what's the agricultural best practices? And, and what's the ideal size of a growing room with all other conditions being equal? The next one is, all right, we have an existing building. We're not designing this from scratch. How do we make something work in, in the existing building? A building that was built in 1955 that you, you can't build these buildings anymore this way. And then the third component to it is, is life safety. And, and how, um, you know, we have a new building code coming out on, on January 1st. We, we need to start a dialogue. So we started a great dialogue with the town, uh, building inspector and, and fire marshal last week. And we are proceeding with a peer review process to help us, uh, understand how these factors play into it. But, um, right now, I'll, I'll say to answer this question, our intent is to utilize, um, larger grow rooms. It's probably not going to be one massive grow room. That, that would not be possibly ideal. But to utilize our rooms in a way that sort of meet all those, uh, all, all those factors I listed earlier. Any questions so far? Great. Uh, what's the largest, uh, single root grow room that exists today? It's 114,000 square feet. And it's in Colorado. In greenhouses, um, they're, they're much larger. But when you start talking about, uh, controlled production and controlled production rooms, they tend to be, uh, smaller. So 114,000 square feet is, is a large one. I would, I would say it's, it's likely that our, our rooms end up being somewhere in that, in, in that size, maybe a little bit smaller. But more to follow on that as we, as we work through the, the town process.
So where do you get the scale economy from? If you have to limit the size of each of your rooms, does that inhibit your getting scale?
No.
Why?
Automation. So our, so in, in the, in our, in our concept, and we'll get into this a lot more on Thursday night. But in our concept, we're, we're using the four walls of building 30 to create a, a growing building. And within there, we put up partitions to create these individual rooms. So if we talk about a, a 70,000 square foot room, we're talking about six of them on a floor, you know, we're talking about some multiple on a floor. And within them, um, we, you know, we build our automation systems, uh, to, 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 you know, to the size of the room. Uh, so, so we, we were certainly able to get to scale even if there's slightly smaller rooms.
And automation for what within the grow rooms?
Nearly, nearly everything. We have, you know, so when, when, when plants get, get started, they get put into a, um, a stationary system. They're watered, um, they're lit. So there's the whole control system for, for keeping a plant at its, um, you know, ideal growing condition for replicating mother nature inside the building. Then we have for, for, for harvesting, um, it's, it's conveyor belts, um, overhead rail systems, uh, excuse me, rail systems. You know, if, uh, we've, we've got some great images to show you on Thursday night and we'll make those available to the public as well. But it's, it's, uh, I don't know if you've seen anything like this before. It's fascinating. And, and this, this is, so our head porticulturist brings this aspect of it to our team. You know, he's been, he's been growing at scale in the Netherlands. Um, he's, he's very unique in his field in the world and, and brings that approach, approach here to make this, um, the incredible project that it will be. Mr. Boynton's question about the order of magnitude of, of improvements. Uh, this, this pie chart shows how we, we, we're calling it roughly a hundred million dollars of, of capital expenditure to get to cultivation. The, the largest one, as we discussed last time, was grow lights. And then you have, um, uh, 15, which is down at the, the five o'clock is the grow systems. So this is the automation and, and watering systems and things to go, go into it. The, the grow rooms, the buildings within the rooms, buildings within the building is, uh, the next one over there at the four o'clock. That's, that's, um, configuring the existing mechanical systems as well as putting up the envelope for the building within the building. So, you know, between those three, they're nearly three quarters of the project and everything else we outlined there.
What was the 45 for again? I was having trouble correlating the colors.
Sorry. I did two. I couldn't get it to work the way I wanted it to. That's for the, the grow lights.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
The grow lights. The, so grow lights, these are LED, this is an LED lighting system. Porticultural LED.
And is this the cost for? The million square feet of production or for the 250,000?
Yes, sir. These are, this is, this is for the, it's, it's technically just over 1.1 million square feet of, of building 30, um, within that box. But this, this also includes a, a, a component which is campus improvements, which I have to see what color that is. There, there's an amount carried there for.
Is that six?
I believe so, yes. It's, it's.
This would be a good trivia question. This, which color is which number?
It is six.
Six.
Yeah, you're right. That is, uh.
It is six. And, and this is for, um, there's some deferred maintenance landscaping, um, the front door. You're going to see some great images on Thursday of, of the vision. And you'll see what we're, we're trying to do at six, like we're, we're trying to build Kendall Square North here. So, so that's really what's in, what's in that number to get us started. I'm sorry?
You don't have enough glass. Every building at Kendall Square is all glass.
We, we had some other very creative ideas from our architectural team. So you'll hear about it on Thursday. The, the next question, what's the plan for energy? Uh, this came from Mr. Goldberg. It's hard for me to answer this question in a Goldilocks realm. Cause this is my, this is one of my favorite topics, obviously. So we, we put in a slide, um, called energy management. And we just wanted to hit on some of the, 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 the big picture topics of, of what we're doing here with the site. You know, indoor growing, um, is extremely valuable. The product that will come from controlled indoor systems is very different than the product that's going to come from a greenhouse. It also uses more energy. And, uh, so what's important about this is, is we looked at this site, understanding that one of the best assets of the site, you can't even see because it's underground. You, you don't see the infrastructure, the energy infrastructure that's there. This, the campus has a 50 megawatt existing substation that's, that's literally, it's actually right next to the wells. And this is fed by dual feeders coming in from national grid, dual 23 KV feeders. So it's like if, if this, if the electrical distribution system around here is a human body, this would be like the aorta of, um, of, of energy supply coming out of the regional distribution, um, substation, which is at Ward Hill, which is just half a mile up the road, uh, in, in Haverhill.
So maybe just to put this into perspective, what proportion of that feeder station comes to the site? I mean, it's, if you're saying it's a big piece, which I understand, but help me understand, is it a tenth of that feeder station or half of it or?
Oh, yeah. No, no, it's not. Um, we, we, let me see if I can get some numbers from.
I'm just curious. I'm just trying to understand the, the scale.
I mean, I think we'd like to know, at least I would like to know how much energy really you're going to use because, I mean, I think I read that in Colorado. really you're going to use because, I mean, I think I read that in Colorado, energy use is up 3%, you know?
Yeah.
Statewide. So I know when, you know, the first day of summer comes and it's really hot and everyone turns on their AC, my, my house, you know, goes black because we have a blackout, you know, because everyone's putting their energy at once. This is kind of scary to have a lot of energy used at one time in one place. So some actual numbers as compared to how much is actually used in the town would be helpful.
We'll put together everything that we can get from National Grid, but to answer your, continue to answer the questions. When we, when we went to plug in the solar array over the winter, National Grid came out to the site. They spent three days with us doing the interconnection because we have such a unique substation. This doesn't exist out there. When National Grid came out, they brought the entire distribute, distributed team, they brought out 12, 10 or 12 engineers. I said, why did you bring everybody out there? They said, the engineers will never see anything like this ever again. What was built here to support a manufacturing operation when it was at scale and pulling the megawatts of power through the grid, through these, this dual system, the dual feeder system, doesn't exist on the grid anymore. They wouldn't, they wouldn't build these things anymore if somebody asked them to. So that speaks to, and I'll see if I can get some better numbers from National Grid, but in terms of, let me, let me answer your question by finishing a couple of these things. By doing the project the way we are at scale, using the technologies that we're using, we intend to, our approach to indoor growing is going to use substantially less energy than a typical small-scale grow facility, and I'll explain why in a second. We have, yes, it's got the largest solar array on the site, it's feeding the town in North Andover. That, that helps with the local demand, you know, it certainly helps to peak shave the energy being consumed by it. But more importantly, as part of this project, we're looking at more clean energy infrastructure, including onsite distributed generation, cogeneration. We're looking at, there's all sorts of ways to use the energy, the heat that's produced by cogeneration to continue to, to lower the overall energy use. There's great opportunity to use carbon dioxide scrubbing, you know, the, sort of, the, the byproduct of distributed generation can be used right here in the plant. We inject carbon dioxide into the plants to help them grow. And if we weren't, you know, ordinarily, you'd be chipping in carbon dioxide to help the plants grow better. And here, if we, if we use cogeneration, we'd actually be able to make the carbon dioxide right here on site, feed it into the plant. You know, between that, the energy-efficient technologies, especially the LED lighting, which is the first efficient technology, dramatically reduces the heat load and the energy consumption of the building. But secondly, just having a central cooling plant is a tremendous head start over any smaller facility. So I, what I, I think I can do is probably put together, you know, we're here on energy demand and the average small-scale facility is here that's being built around right now. And because we're going into this leading, thinking about energy, this is what's going to make this business model successful in a couple of years as prices come down and the cost of energy is such a big part of production, as you probably read also in the same articles about Colorado. At some point, the energy cost to produce this can be prohibitive. So we're going into this, starting with how can we get the energy low? And then secondly, how do we take Osgood Landing with all this infrastructure underneath it and turn it into an energy asset on the grid? And we absolutely can do that, and we look forward to discussing that in the future. But it's, it's not really a Goldilocks kind of conversation yet.
What do you do for backup, energy backup? Is there, like if, if there were a massive blackout or an outage, what would you do?
So with, typically, a smaller facility would do a generator. They'd have a generator on site. We'd envision having some component that we could keep online through cogeneration. But, but secondly, one of the things about the infrastructure we have here is that we're dual-fed by two different feeders. One feeder that, I won't get into, when we have outages around town, typically, one of the two feeders goes down, and our plant doesn't lose power because it switches over automatically to, to the other feeder. That, that's part of the infrastructure that they built into the substation. Lucent in 99, when they built this, they said the power shall not go down as long as there isn't some catastrophic event that's taken out everything, God forbid. You know, if a tree falls on one of the feeder lines and the power's out for four hours, we need to be immediately fed by a feeder that came from a different direction, and So the next question is on host community agreement. I wanted to answer this a little better because I, I think that as we all read the new law, and Mr. Goldberg's comment was, was spot-on. Under, under the new law, there's, it's, it seems like it's maybe less, less can be recovered from towns for impact fees because of a five-year timeline or a limit to it and because of, you know, what that impact fees can be used for. And so as we've been working on this, we believe and we've presented to the, to the town, it'll be outside of this forum, but we've, we've presented a schema that gets the town to, the deal that we put in front of the town at the last town meeting, something to that, to that effect. We think it's an incredible value to the town. We think we've been able to very carefully model out what doing this at scale would mean for the community and present something that will be very substantial revenue. So I, you know, I, I think we'll still continue to talk about the opportunity, the financial opportunity this has for the town in terms of direct revenues as well as the indirect In summary, our development team is driving forward with, with our activities. We've got the pedal to the metal in terms of putting the engineering together, working with the town, starting peer reviews. Emily will speak in a minute about just our work in, in following the CCC and understanding what's going to be coming down the pipe there. Like I said in the beginning, we're starting to compete with other towns, so we don't want to lose our first mover advantage, so we thank you for anything you can do to help us move to the, to the bylaw and support a bylaw that will support our project faster. And we, you know, again, thank you. If there's, if there's an opportunity to, to work with the town to, to impact this bylaw, we would gladly accept it and gladly get to work tomorrow for that opportunity.
What do you mean in regards to peer review?
So with respect to the building department and to the fire department, who we've spoken to first, the, with respect to the building department, the building inspector has, as we, we talked through the considerations for how to make an old building that they don't build anymore, that you couldn't build under today's code, conform to what the new code's going to require, the building inspector and economic development officer suggested that we engage a peer review process to come on board, to start working hand-in-hand with us, to work through the code issues, and to report directly to the building inspector in that case. And the same process for the fire chief. The state fire marshal's office is very interested as these new facilities are going in, sort of like solar, they have somebody that's looking at them very closely. So a peer review process there as well. And as it, as it comes back into the, the planning side of things, we would, we would welcome the opportunity to have a peer review, start to look at things like our, our water testing, so that you don't have to take my word for it. We'll have engineers that have produced the reports with all the water information in it, like, for example, an odor mitigation plan, a security plan. These are the types of things that we'd welcome peer review to start working on sooner than later if we have that opportunity with the planning department.
And where in Colorado was the 114,000 square foot facility? In Denver? Or, you know, where?
It's in Denver. We couldn't disclose it. It's not publicly, it's, we have, we have, we have terms of an NDA that we, we know it exists. Some building department record has it, and we didn't want to elaborate from there.
What was the sensitivity over that?
With respect to...
With respect to not being able to identify the location of the facility, what's the
Members of our team had been in it, and the size of the individual room wasn't stated in that. So if you, yeah, I mean, let me talk to our legal team and find out if we can, find out if we can elaborate further.
Just as we go through this drafting of the bylaw process and whatnot, it's interesting to know where these other facilities are located and of equal nature, size, and processes. It's good to actually be able to look at the town specifically and see what they have implemented and how their state has regulated it and kind of, you know, back those things up. So any additional information or details of that nature are extremely helpful when we take a look at other examples that can help us.
Sure. Absolutely. So is your question specifically with respect to the size of an overall grow facility or an individual growing room? I might have misunderstood your question. I apologize.
Well, you called out the 114,000 square foot facility.
I'm sorry. That, that's a single, so that's part of a larger facility. That's actually a single room where you walk in a door inside the building. So the building within the building is 114,000 square feet. The, the facility itself is larger.
And you still can't disclose where that facility is?
It's in Colorado. Let me just, let me ask my legal team, because maybe we can, I just...
Can I just ask one question? Is it, in Colorado, is that permitted under their land use regulations, the size of that cultivation center? I think that's what we're driving at. Can you point us to that particular town with the bylaw?
Let me do this because I don't want you to violate an NDA that we signed.
Thank you.
He answered a question to Mr. Boynton, which was the size of a room within a room, which we were allowed to elaborate on. If we answer your question right now, we're telling everybody where that room is, which we can't. However, what we probably could do is give examples of communities to the town, and what we can do is on any of them that we may have signed an NDA, why don't we log into those communities and see what's in the public record in those towns? And then we could provide Rebecca with links to the public record in those towns. Is that what you're looking for?
Information.
As, as long as it's public record and we didn't obtain it through a non-disclosure agreement. Certainly. Okay? I, I understand what you're looking for.
So the, I'm sorry, did I, did we answer that question?
I think we're okay.
Okay. Is the, the final slide, the next steps, we, I'll just fly through these really quickly. We welcome any further questions, and any questions that we couldn't answer tonight will come on Thursday with, with answers to those, with the exception, I might need a little bit more time to get power grid information and data, but I think we'll be able to do that two weeks from now. We'll be able to have that information. So the site walk on Thursday, we have an additional handout, and this is a question for the board. The, we put together an agenda that seeks to be one of the most riveting and exciting nights that we're going to have all fall, I really believe, because we're talking about the coolest project that's happening in town. And we are bringing the whole team out to, to meet the team, and we are putting together renderings where we have the architect out to talk about how we're going to transform the Merrimack Valley Works into the Massachusetts Innovation Works. And we know that we have a lot of grounds to cover, and we know that the Patriots start at seven...
Eight.
Eight, eight o'clock. But what we attempt to do here is, through a series of two- or three-minute sort of mini presentations, cover the key topics from, from the expert who, we believe, expert in the world, who have come here to talk about them. But this is all part of generally walking around the facility to the areas we're talking about, so you, so you can both understand what we have, what we're, what we're visioning, what we're aiming for, and who's going to be doing it.
Can you give us a sense, and it could be Thursday, of some of the, if there are any projects of this magnitude in Massachusetts? I mean, I saw something online about something in Freetown, I think down by Ton, I don't know if that ever materialized or not, but can you give us a sense of what is around? Because it might be something that we may want to look at and see.
What else is out there?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yes.
If there's anything out there, it may not be this size, but what else is out there currently, assuming it's just, at this point, would obviously be medical, but...
Sure.
That'd be helpful, too.
Yes, sir, we can do that. Does this approach work for the, for the planning board? I assume that...
The selectmen are going to be there, too. So, I mean, you know, it will probably, you could just imagine with probably 15 people or more, you're going to get a lot of questions, you know? I think structuring is a good idea, but, you know, who knows whether everything is going to be in five-minute intervals.
Say your DVR.
We presume that you'll need to call the meeting to open a meeting and close it?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah. And the selectmen have to do the same.
Should we set up tables to have this type of setup or just?
Well, I mean, again, if it's amenable to that, that would be great, you know?
Of course.
If, if you have to get any kind of length and any kind of cost, I wouldn't recommend you do it. But if it's a very simple thing to set up a set of tables, then fine, probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
But if we set up tables, that won't compromise the ability to walk around and show us the facility. I mean, that's the reason we're going, right?
Yeah, maybe, I'll just brief, in a high, very high level, we're going to come in, we're going to sign in, chairman will call the meeting to order presumably. We're going to do 10 minutes of introductions. Here's the owner, here's the vision, here's the team that's here tonight, and then we're all going to stand up, and we're going to hit these six or seven stations around the building. We're going to stop at some stations, look at renderings and some visualizations of what's happening there. You're going to hear from the expert, and then I think there's going to be a lot of questions and talking, questions and walking that'll happen in between it to accomplish. If we're okay walking and answering questions, I think that's great. But otherwise, when we get to the end of it, and we're trying to do this all in a logical procession of what you're going to see when you go through your, at the end of it, we come back down, we sit down, there might be cookies, and we're happy to answer any questions as long as you want the meeting to continue.
Yeah, I mean, I think what will happen, you know, as typical as any site walk, you know, you, you start, everybody walks around, then, you know, there's like five different subcliques of people walking around, and, and then you, maybe at the end, who knows, people may even have to leave early, and then, yeah, we'll probably arrange to come back, recap, and then break, but if that doesn't happen, it might not happen.
Okay. It's admittedly, admittedly an aggressive agenda to try and do a site walk, but we don't want this to, we don't want to put a two-hour presentation in front of the group.
No, no, I think it's more walking around and asking questions is really, because that will trigger mostly everything. Though, there shouldn't be any pitches. It should be, we start the meeting, and we stop walking.
Can we conclude with just some sort of follow-on commentary that Emily had put together with respect to, I guess we were hoping to throw a couple of comments in with respect to the bylaw development.
Well, yeah, if you have anything to share with us, that's fine.
Just before that, for Thursday's meeting, I was curious if you could talk a little bit about your... bit about your funding plan, whether you're fully funded or if that's a staged rollout as you develop this, this plan further.
Sure.
Construction timetable, like it, how long, it's, it's, it says $100 million. Is that going to be in a year, two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years? I mean, just a general idea of how the, and this might be part of it already, how the build out would actually occur.
Yes, interesting. Absolutely.
So as Dan mentioned, I'm a consultant to the project as well. I'm from ADS Ventures, which is a government relations firm. My job is really to bridge the gap between the local process and what's happening at the state level as well. So at the risk of piling on, wanted to really thank you guys for your appetite for information, really digging in in a very comprehensive process. We did have the chance to review the bylaws as a team. We're happy to provide sort of some initial comments, but you know, welcome the opportunity to work with you guys as this process unfolds. So, you know, at a very high level, I think that there were some questions in town council's memo about whether the bylaw should be an overlay or sort of a rezoning process. And I think from our perspective, we think it's appropriate to adopt the adult use cannabis bylaws as an overlay district rather than to rezone the property as a whole. We think this for two reasons. So there are existing tenants in the building that of course we would love to keep. We want to make sure that businesses that, you know, want to site on the property to support cannabis cultivation or research sites have the ability to do so as well. I know that there was also some question about the timeline for the bylaws. I know this was kicked around a little bit earlier in the meeting, whether, you know, the bylaw should be considered during a special town meeting, either in sort of like the November, December timeline, or whether, you know, the town should wait to consider what's going to happen on the state level with the triple C's regulations that are due to come out in March. So they're required to come out by March 15th. From our perspective, you know, to keep the momentum of the project going and to protect, you know, the town's interest, we think it would be best to consider the bylaws in short order. Sort of walking through the regulatory process at the state level, which you guys may be familiar with as well. As I mentioned, the regulations for adult use cannabis applications from the triple C must be promulgated by March 15th. So walking through the statutorily required timeline, they have to notice, provide public notice that they're going to be considering regulations at a, you know, public comment at an open meeting. It's a 21 day requirement for that notice. Also, any regulations that are going to be affecting local communities, which I think this regulation pretty clearly will, there's an additional 14 day notice that's layered on top of that. So it's really 35 days notice total. And that notice will go directly to both the DHCD, which is the Department of Housing Community Development, and the Mass Municipal Association to make sure that cities and towns have ample opportunity to weigh in on, you know, the forthcoming regulatory scheme. So it is anticipated that there will be, because this is such a, it's going to be, you know, very broad and sweeping set of regulations, that there will be an appetite to hold several hearings throughout the state so that they're geographically dispersed. So that timeline, you know, walking back the 35 days from the March 15th deadline, just to give you guys a sense of when, you know, the earliest you might be seeing draft regulations from the state, walking that back, it's the first week in February, February 8th. But we anticipate that it would actually be before that, just because of this, you know, multiple hearing requirement. You know, in our conversations with folks, because we do have, you know, relationships with a couple of the members of the triple C, there is an appetite to incorporate, you know, as much comment as possible so that the regulations come out fully baked, no pun intended, but something that, you know, speaks to all interests. You know, we as a project are going to be actively engaged with the triple C and with their team in the development of regulations. And to the extent that it's helpful, we're more than happy to sort of report back to you all as well in terms of what we're hearing on their timeline. But, you know, clearly the regulations wouldn't be available for a special town meeting in November, most likely, because they're, you know, getting up and running and we'll need at least a couple of months to come up with, you know, comprehensive draft. But we feel that the bylaw process, especially shown in the work that's already been completed, will be more than adequate to address, you know, the town and public safety concerns in citing cannabis cultivation. We also expect that, you know, because the statute is so prescriptive in terms of what the regulations, you know, can and should contain, that they're really going to focus primarily on the application process and retail sites more specifically as well. Whereas we think the bylaw process is more well suited to speak to the sort of citing and those, those concerns. We also like the approach that you guys have already taken and, you know, putting the placeholder in there, that, you know, any site obviously would need to comply with the state regulations, which really, you know, puts the risk on the developer rather than the town. So happy to, you know, address any questions that you might have, but wanted to give sort of that overview of where we stand from, you know, state perspective as well, because I know that there had been some questions about that. And really, you know, to again, thank you for the process that you guys have already, you know, welcomed us into and to see, you know, how we can be most helpful moving forward.
So you're suggesting at a special town meeting? So what your hope is before any regulations are promulgated?
Yes.
Absolutely. And so these are regulations that are going to talk about, and they're, and looking through what they're to see triple C, CCC supposed to do. I mean, there are like 30, 40 different things that they talk about, but things including security, seat to sale, tracking, you know, different, where things, I mean, I assume, you know, alcohol, the ABCC regulates what you can have in the same establishment. There may or may not be things along those lines. I mean, to me, it seems like if ultimately, you know, something's approved and there's a special permit process, those are things that I, I would want to know about and frankly wouldn't want to say, follow all state rules because then what's the purpose of having our own criteria? And I wouldn't want to write something and then rewrite it. So I get it, but I'm skeptical. So that's just my own personal perspective.
Is it true? I believe many of the things that you've described are in. Already in process now for, under the, the current statute? I, I, I think this might be, this is, this is possibly an area where, I mean, our, our hopes would be just to, to have possibly a working session to, and I'm not sure if the, the planning board is open to this or if the planning department and town offices are open to it, but to, to start to, 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 to address some of these. Because I think, I, I'd love to understand more of the issues that, that you're seeing out there because I, I think some of, I think a lot of what you said can be addressed. But.
I'm just not sure how. I mean, it says, so if the regulations don't exist right now, and maybe they're the same as the ones for the current RMDs, maybe they're different, maybe they learned from them and decided that the current methods of how things are done is not what they like and they changed them. Seems, seems odd when we have a moratorium waiting for these regulations to come into existence, to put something in place before they come into existence. That, and I, I still don't know why we need November or December or January when the earliest it seems like you could get an application in would be, assuming you're not a priority, which at this point, without being a registered dispensary that's got a final provisional certificate and is operational, which maybe that's where you're trying to get to. I think that, that is, would be bold and difficult. You're looking at April 15th is when priority applications would, can start to be, and they're not accepting until June. I'm not sure why November or December.
Well, that's, that's, that's a fair point. The, the, the application and the licensing happens as fast as the application and the licensing can happen. It's run by the DPH. There's milestones we'd love to hit to get put on expedited list to get a, you know, get to the front of the line. We may have other ways of, of getting to that. Certainly we need the town support to do that, but we, we may have creative ways to get there. But this is about getting a, a town bylaw to, to allow us to start building the innovation works. The, the town is missing a huge opportunity, the property is missing a huge opportunity and we're seeing it, we're not seeing it slip away yet, but at some point, and it's starting to happen, towns are competing and winning our business, business that we want to hear, have here in North Andover. From, from what I've heard and from what I've read through the, the comments, including the ones Mr. Goldberg's discussed, we believe that the, the risk on this squarely falls on the developer and the bylaw can be written that way. And we, we also believe that the, the new laws, you know, it's, it's, it's very prescriptive. You know, things can be no more stringent than, than, you know, for, for some of those things than they are now. So we, we, we know what they're going to require and we're complying with them in, in our approach to getting the current license. So I, I would just encourage the, the town to consider the, the economic opportunity at hand here and, and not to get, you know, hand tied by, you know, we can what if this thing until 2019 if, if we needed to, to get past a moratorium. But, but what if is not going to deliver the, the project that I know this can bring to the town and can start to bring to the town even this year with a successful town meeting this fall. And I, I don't want to get into my discussions with, as far as the, the host community agreement where, and where that can go, but this is very real and we're, and we're going to make it very real. So we, we do, we, we do believe that the opportunity to pull a, a bylaw together that can adequately mitigate these risks, and I believe that there are other towns that are doing this right now, exists in the North Andover. We've got to get our, ourself in gear and get ahead of this while the opportunity is here. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Which other towns? I, 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 I think that most towns have put a moratorium in place for the exact purpose of what we're doing now, which I, and I, I do want to compliment you on, on answering the questions that we've had. I'm really looking forward to the site visit. I think all those things are great and I think this is shaping up much better than it did, did previously. And I, I think at least from my perspective, there's a lot of hope that this is going to formulate into a really great bylaw. But I, the, seems like you said, like, I agree with you, the risk is on your end.
Is the moratorium largely for retail? You know, is.
I don't think, I don't see it that way, no. I see it as a, the moratorium is there so that there's enough time to put in place the zoning package for recreational marijuana. Retail is the most controversial part of that, but for land use, I think it's equally, I actually think retail is easier for land use, you know? Where do we have package stores right now? To me, those are probably good places where you could have marijuana businesses. Retail now, you may want to say that some can't be within 500 feet or 1,000 feet of another. You have the school restrictions, you have things like that, but they're not that hard to do. But a large cultivation facility, whether it's yours or somewhere else's, a independent laboratory, those may be actually more tricky to zone for. To me, that's what the moratorium, and, and I think if we fully expect to have it done before the regular town meeting and have it presented there, that's the whole point, is that these regulations, so far, the CCC was supposed to be appointed on, by September 1st and they were finished being appointed on September 1st. So March 15th regulations are due, I would anticipate March 15th or somewhere right then regulations come out. And if, at least in my mind, if you have this process keep on moving towards that and you have a real good draft bylaw ready for that, then you incorporate those regulations and then you go from there. It seems like a smart timeline from the town's perspective.
Understood. And, and, but it's, as we said at town meeting, it's also important to recognize that there's a special permitting process. You know, the zoning is, the zoning, the, the special permitting process ensures compliance with all laws and, and, you know, there's no special permit until the laws are out there, promulgated and ready to, you know, to, you know, hopefully in approved condition on this project, you'll have to show compliance with every one of them. And it, it just seems that the town would be, if, if the town has to wait and talk about how we're going to cite other cultivation facilities in town.
Not cite, just zone, just zone. Like I said, I, I think I said before you were here, we don't have to have a project in mind. Most times when we zone for things, it's not that there's a specific project in mind, it's that this is part of the plan for how the town is going to look potentially in the future. And this might be a good place where you have a laboratory. I anticipate that we won't have a plan for it. You guys happen to be ahead of the game and have a plan, which is great, but, but that's, that's just not how it is.
I mean, certainly if you had to rely on a master planning process to tell you where you should put, you know, we wouldn't, you know, I'll just, I'll, I'll leave it and I'll stop talking because I, I know you're probably sick of, of hearing me on this subject, but this, this is a developer that's, we're, we're spending $10,000 a day with our foot on, pedal on the metal to put together the engineering and the due diligence and everything we need to make this project a success. I live in town, I want to see this be a success. We're on the eve of $100 million budget in town and we are looking at all sorts of scary things in the, in the revenue of this town. And I, I think that, you know, beyond zoning, I, I hope that the town can really take a good, hard look at the benefits that this project can bring to the town very quickly. And, and thank you again for, for your time tonight.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. So looking forward to visiting on Thursday.
We're really looking forward to the, to the evening. Thank you.
So the master plan update, I touched on it a little bit ago. So the committee meets on Thursday night while you're at your site, site walk. The consultant is going to attend that meeting and the purpose of the meeting is really to start to, you know, formalize the marketing material, the message, the structure of the first public forum, which is November 2nd, and what that's going to look like and what type of teasing questions and things like that, that are going to be available where we're going to, based on the existing condition report that is being formulated for the 9/21 meeting, kind of what that report says. And then the next step is kind of visioning and goals and, and that public forum to try to draw out as much input as we can get. So that being said, the, the draft report is due within the next two weeks. I'm hoping for next week for the existing condition report and I will send that to the board as well as the committee once we receive it. The consultant would recommend, you know, any written comments that you'd like to submit. You can submit it through me or you can come to the 9/21 meeting. I've actually scheduled it in this room. So that's where any comments that, that you may have or the committee themselves with the existing condition report, maybe what they are curious about, what didn't come through that they thought would, what, you know, things that they just might think don't seem right. So that type of comment to try to really formalize that draft so that it'll be available to the public two weeks prior to the November 2nd meeting, so that the public will have time to digest it and then come to the forum with an open mind and really start to get some of the concerns. The town website has been updated. On the homepage, it includes a tab now for the master plan advisory committee. That leads to a webpage which has linked to now the agendas, the minutes and any of the communication material. Very soon, what should be published is a newsletter report that's going to be included in the tax bills that hit home October 1st and a press release to the Tribune, I anticipate should be either at the end of this week or early next week. They're planning at least two to three press releases to hit the Tribune and again, as part of that media kit and getting the word out about the public forum.
So do you seem pleased? Do you, you think everything's on track from your perspective?
Yeah, everything seems to be on schedule. I think it's, there was a little delay at the beginning, but as far as hitting the milestones, I think they're on track. The zoning's kind of running parallel, but we haven't received any of the zoning diagnostic information. But the existing condition report, again, I, I anticipate getting next week, which I think will give everybody a good two weeks to done, digest that and comment on it before the 21st. And the 21st meeting, the intent is all the communication, the drafts that they reviewed. And the 21st meeting, the intent is, all the communication, the drafts that they review on Thursday night should be finalized, and then they plan to hit the ground running on September 22nd with that media kit and that information to hit as many people as they can in town. And I think they have a good communication strategy.
Good. Any questions? Great. Excellent. Okay, plug it away, and if you need any help, let us know.
Okay. Like I said, if you can attend the 21st meeting, I think it will be very helpful. And to just, if you don't submit written comments, to be able to make any comments to the committee and provide any direction.
I think I'm traveling then, but.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
Minutes.
Minutes? Okay. Which meeting are they in, the minutes for?
August 15th meeting.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the August 15th minutes.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.